I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange Township Zoning Commission on Tuesday, January 7th, 2025, to order. The first items I believe we have on the agenda is we need a chair and vice chair. So I will be accepting...
I nominate Christine to be chairman.
I second.
Okay, so it sounds unanimous here. All right, can I have...so we have a motion, we have it second. I guess it's time for a vote. Second twice, yes.
Mr. McNulty?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Tribellus?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Ms. Avadunula?
Yes.
All right, so the next item of business is a vice chair. Can I have a motion to nominate a vice chair?
Can I nominate?
Come on guys, you had time to figure this out before I got here.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Pierce.
I'll do it.
Dennis, would you go with that?
Yeah, that's fine, whatever you want to do, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
The question said he's good with it. I don't understand that.
Are you with it?
I don't understand that question.
Are you with it? Yeah? Can I have...can I have a second? I'll second. Okay.
Mr. McNulty?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Tribellus?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Ms. Avadunula?
Yes.
All right, motion passed. So we now have a chair and a vice chair. So the other item on the agenda will then be a continuance of zoning application Z O N dash two four dash oh eight. We are continuing from 11/12/2024, and this is Epcun Communities at Evans Farm. So if we have a staff report, that'd be, I think, a good way to start off.
Thank you, Ms. Tribellus. I'll go over the staff report briefly. I will just remind everyone, including myself, the applicant, and the commission members, please try to speak clearly into the microphone as best you can so that everyone in the room and watching around the world on YouTube can hear you clearly.
Around the world.
Wait, make us feel good.
We are here to discuss rezoning case Z O N dash twenty four dash zero eight. This was a continuation from a meeting in November. As such, I'll give a brief staff report, not going to go over every little detail, but I will try to highlight the items that have changed since the previous submittal. Then I believe the applicant has prepared a presentation as well to go over those changes also. So on the following page of the staff report, Eric, if you wouldn't mind scrolling down, you can see the updated site plan there, which is largely the same. I would call attention to the southern portion of the site where a few things have changed. There's two fewer units on that south side of the proposed English Drive. Underneath that illustrative site plan is the layout comparison from the original Evans Farm conceptual layout to the current layout that is proposed this evening. On the following page, you can also see a comparison this time versus the previous submittal. So the older plan was up there on top with the former eight units south of English Drive, and their distances to that southern property line. And then underneath is the new and revised layout showing six units with the distance marked again to that southern property line. In terms of the uses, I will call attention to just kind of a minor textual change. Language was added to allow for platted lots on the north side of the property because the Delaware County Engineers' Office is requiring those lots to be individually platted on the very north. And so language was added to make sure that those newly created lots comply with the Evans Farm standards. They would still be the same condominium style. Homes and dwelling units, just the legal language around the actual recording of the lots would change. On the following page, a few things I'll highlight. The unit count has dropped slightly, so this is 159 residential units proposed to be located here instead of 161. It's a reduction of two units from the previous submittal, and those were both detached single-family condominium units, so we are still looking at 129 detached single-family condominium dwellings, one attached duplex units, unit, and seven attached to four-unit townhome buildings. The open space count did change slightly. The applicant is now proposing to have 24.07 acres of open space, which is approximately 38.33 percent of the site. In terms of road access and connectivity, there was a minor change here that may have some impact, so the phasing of the development has been updated so that connection to the Rock Drive stuff would not occur into the third and final phase of the sub area. I believe the applicant will cover that in greater detail in their presentation. In section number five, landscaping, there were a few things that changed here. One was that, at the request of staff, language was added to the text to clarify that street trees within the public right-of-way would be the maintenance responsibility of the developer, and then the homeowners association responsibility after the development period because the township does not maintain street trees that are within the right-of-way. Landscaping was also added again on that southern portion of the site, so a four-foot mound has been added, as well as additional evergreens in that area to add some additional screening on that southern side of the property. Architecture remained unchanged. Signage did change slightly, again responding to staff comments from the previous submittal. The applicant has reduced the number of community info and then feather flag signs as well. And all other staff comments from the previous submittal have been addressed by the applicant. In terms of our recommendation, again, we are generally supportive of this proposal. We do commend the applicant for being responsive to concerns of staff and neighboring residents. Unit count has been lowered. Additional landscaping and buffering has been added on the phasing of the development adjusted to help address traffic concerns. Do still want to point out, the overall density of Evans Farm would not be changing, but approval of this amendment would shift some of that density outward. However, one of the goals of Evans Farm writ large is to provide different housing typologies, and this proposal would add housing choices to the area. Staff does recommend approval of this amendment to the zoning commission. This time, I have nothing further. I believe the applicant has prepared a presentation, and I will be on hand if the commission has any questions.
Thank you, Robyn. So at this time, what I would like to do is next have the applicant prepare and give their presentation, and then after they have done that, we can open the floor to public comment. But the applicant would like to share the revisions they made with the public. That would be great.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Fankhauser with Epcun Communities, 500 Stonehenge Parkway, Dublin, 43017. Members of the commission and staff, thank you again for your time this evening. We're excited to be back here to share the changes we've made to our plan since meeting on November 12th, and, Robyn, thank you for your review of those changes that we've submitted. Eric, can you help me move through the slides as you did last time? Great, thank you. Can you go to slide two, please? Thank you. During the November 12th meeting, we had a great opportunity to hear from our neighbors and from commission members. And on December 10th, we met with our Bryn Mawr neighbors to share initial revisions to the site plan and to have conversations about their thoughts of those changes and any additional suggestions that they may have.
There's nothing, shall we? If you want to hold off for a second until I can get it up and running.
Close master.
Add it for a second.
Top light, clear of master.
We can go to the third slide, please, Eric. There we go, thank you. There are three main takeaways from those meetings that we have worked diligently to address before meeting with you all again here tonight. The first key takeaway was the Rock Drive connection. During the commission meeting and again during a Bryn Mawr neighborhood meeting, we listened and heard safety concerns about increased cut-through traffic without a signal present on South Old State. We have worked with all parties involved, and we are happy to share that we have resolved that timing of the Rock Drive connection and the signal installation. The second takeaway was the distance between our courtyard homes south of English Drive to our Bryn Mawr neighbors' property lines. We listened and heard that it's important that we create more distance between our courtyard homes and the Bryn Mawr neighbors', and we have done that by revising and improving our plan. The third key takeaway specifically from the November 12th meeting was buffering along those property lines where eight original courtyard homes were located. Buffering was also discussed at length during the Bryn Mawr neighborhood meeting on December 10th. Again, we listened and we heard the commission and our neighbors. Since those meetings, we have significantly increased the buffering along Bryn Mawr property lines. Eric, next slide, please. This slide speaks directly to the first takeaway of the Rock Drive connection. This was tricky, as there are many parties involved. Delaware County, the county requires a connection of public roads, Rock Drive and future English Drive, to be connected. The county has made clear that the road must be connected sequentially with our phased road construction. Then there's Orange Township. The township is responsible for the maintenance and safety of said public roads. And the third party is Evans Farm Master Developer. They are responsible for the installation of the traffic signal on South Old State. And lastly, the fourth party in this is Epcun. Our control lies in the construction of the connection. After hearing safety concerns from our Bryn Mawr neighbors about increased cut-through traffic without a signal present on South Old State, we reached out to Delaware County, Orange Township, and Evans Farm Master Developer to discuss and brainstorm possible solutions to the timing of that connection and signal installation. After multiple conversations over eight weeks, and just today, and with the understanding that the only component within Epcun's control is the road construction, we determined the best way for Epcun to aid in the timing alignment of the signal installation and Rock Drive connection was to re-phase our public road improvements. Originally, Rock Drive was to be connected during the construction Phase Two. Delaware County and Orange Township see no issue with us pushing the connection back into Phase Three. In addition to our action of re-phasing, Delaware County and Evans Farm Master Developer have agreed to the installation timing of the signal to occur within 18 months of the Phase Two infrastructure commencement. The combination of our re-phasing of Rock Drive from Phase Two to Three and the agreement reached by the county and Evans Farm Master Developer have...we have made...excuse me. We have better aligned the timing of the connection and the light installation. Eric, next slide, please. I want to revisit the traffic numbers for the sub area because our neighbors had made comments during the zoning commission meeting that the number of homes we are proposing raised concerns of increased traffic as it relates to the Rock Drive connection. We reached out to traffic engineers at Kimley Horn to evaluate and compare the traffic counts and peak hour trips of the Evans Farm conceptual plan consisting of 93 homes and the Epcun sub area plan of now 159 homes. Kimley Horn's traffic engineers confirm that the Epcun community will generate an estimated 65 fewer daily trips and 29 fewer peak hour trips than the 93 single-family homes would generate. Next slide, please, Eric. Epcun has been building homes and communities designed for baby boomers for almost 40 years, homes and communities that feature first-floor living, a low-maintenance lock-and-leak lifestyle, homes that make aging and place safely possible. That is what we do. We are sharing this information because it supports the senior housing traffic numbers we shared on the previous slide. Because we build homes and communities designed for baby boomers, we inherently generate fewer school-aged children than conventional single-family homes, and students directly correlate to traffic. We have built 537 homes in the township over the past 25 years, and there are only 16 students living in those homes. And based on our student averages per home in the township, we estimate that the courtyards at Evans Farm will generate five students. Fewer students in our communities equals fewer trips to and from home to school and activities. Anybody with children understands that. We believe that the combination of less traffic, re-phasing the Rock Drive connection, and the commitment of the signal installation on South Old State provides a solution needed to ease safety concerns for our Bryn Mawr neighbors. Next slide, please, Eric. The second key takeaway was the distance between our courtyard homes south of English Drive to our Bryn Mawr neighbors' property lines. Staff and commission commented specifically on the distance between our proposed courtyard homes south of English Drive to the Bryn Mawr property lines to the south. Our Bryn Mawr neighbors also shared that they wanted more space spacing and for the units to shift as far east as possible. We heard your thoughts and suggestions and felt that we could improve our plan if we modified our layout while keeping all...excuse me, all your suggestions in mind. This slide shows our original plan of eight units south of English Drive and our updated and current plan layout showing six homes south of English Drive. In addition to eliminating two units, we also shifted units to the east, resulting in more distance between our homes and our neighbors' property lines. Eric, next slide, please. This slide depicts the distance gained by eliminating the two units and shifting the six units to the east. You will also find this information on Exhibit H7 in your binders if it's hard to see on that presentation. Our neighbors, Mr. and Mrs. Novo, were impacted the most distance-wise in our first plan. The home is directly south of our most western courtyard homes, south of English Drive. There was approximately 42 feet between the back of our homes and their property line. With these changes, we added an additional 63 feet, resulting in a total distance of approximately 105 feet between the courtyard home and Mr. and Mrs. Novo's property line. The increased distance between the other five units and the property lines is noticeable. Respectively, they measure a total of 128 feet, then 152 feet, 176 feet, and 199 feet, followed by the last home to the far east by 210 feet from the backs of our homes to the Bryn Mawr property line. In addition to the great distance we have achieved between our courtyard homes and the property lines, it's crucial to understand the privacy of the courtyard home as it compares to a single-family home for our homebuyers and for our neighbors. These six homes provide vertical privacy and horizontal privacy for our neighbors and homebuyers. Vertical privacy because all homes are one-story in the back. No one is looking down from a second story to a neighboring home or yard. And we achieve horizontal privacy because the outdoor space is located on the side of the home, not the rear, where a single-family home would have a yard backing up directly to the Bryn Mawr property lines. Next slide, please, Eric. On this slide, you will see Exhibit HA, also in your binders to refer to, depicting the additional distance and open space we have created with our courtyard homes versus the assumed single-family homes on the Evans Farm conceptual layout. We created this comparison with our engineers by taking comparable Evans Farm lot sizes and building footprints and placed them on the Evans Farm layout. You can see the homes on the conceptual layout are approximately 54 homes from the property lines, and the Epcun courtyard homes are at minimum 105 feet off those property lines. Our improved plan offers more distance for our neighbors when compared to both Epcun's original plan and Evans Farm conceptual layout. The changes made to our site plan are a significant improvement, and we believe they should satisfy our neighbors and the commission members. Eric, next slide, please. And the third key takeaway was buffering. During the commission meeting on November 12th, staff comments suggested adding buffering along the property lines where our previous eight homes were located. We took that suggestion and modified our plan, excuse me, adding additional landscaping along the three eastern property lines to the south. We then shared that plan with our Bryn Mawr neighbors on December 10th. We had a productive conversation about those property lines, and after that meeting, we felt we could do more for our neighbors along the southern line. The first improvement we made was that we started by shifting the pond. By doing this, we were able to create more space between the existing tree line and the pond to add another buffer element of evergreen trees. And the second improvement was made because of a conversation I had with Mrs. Albert at the end of our neighborhood meeting. Her home is located about third from the far west. Her parcel's there. She shared that she appreciates that there's open space behind her home, but our plan has moved English Drive closer to her property line, and we removed homes that buffered her from that road. She communicated that adding landscaping along her property line would make a difference, and I completely understood where she was coming from. We looked at our plan to see how we could achieve the greatest buffer possible for her property and all other property lines south of English Drive, west of our pond and all the way to Rock Drive. We recognized that we had an opportunity to make a great improvement here and decided that in addition to landscaping, we would add mounding. In our plan, you will see that there's four-to-six-foot mounding as well as evergreens. We shared with Robyn it was four. It does vary, it goes up to six. These additions significantly buffer our neighbors from English Drive and enhance the open space. It is also important to note that not all open space is created equal. This designated common area open space will be beautifully landscaped with a combination of mounding, evergreens, and a pond, and will be consistently maintained by the community association. Our plan provides certainty of beautiful landscaping and maintenance for our neighbors and our future homebuyers. The same certainty cannot be said for an Evans Farm conceptual layout with single-family homes, where yards back to neighbors' property lines and landscape plans and owner-driven maintenance are unknown. I'd like to wrap up by saying that on November 12th, we presented a really good plan. But today, we presented a great plan, and it's a plan that's better than the Evans Farm conceptual layout. This plan generates less...oh, I'm sorry, next slide, I didn't tell you. This plan generates less traffic. We have added open space, buffering, and home-to-home distance for our Bryn Mawr neighbors. Our courtyard homes provide greater privacy. We have worked with Orange Township, Delaware County, and Evans Farm Master Developer to ease safety concerns by better aligning the Rock Drive connection with the signal installation on South Old State. We generate less impact on the township's operating fund due to our private streets and private amenities. We are density and open space neutral for overall development of Evans Farm, and we will generate a net positive fiscal impact on the Olentangie Local School District. Next slide, please, Eric. We have been good listeners, and we have acted. We believe that because of our history within the township and this improved plan, the courtyards at Evans Farm is worthy of your recommendation. We thank you all for your time. We are here to answer any remaining questions you may have. With me and the regional president, Craig Cherry, we have our great consultants here with Kimley Horn, G2 Landscape Planning, and also Tom Hart as our legal counsel. Thank you.
All right, does the applicant have any additional speakers that they would like to present? Okay, you can use that also for rebuttals as well, because I'm sure there'll be questions. So at this point, I'd like to go ahead and open the floor to the public for public comments. I'd like to remind people, there are a lot of people here, so if you could limit it to three, five minutes, try not to repeat arguments that your neighbor has said, just say, "I agree," ditto, and that way as many people can get a chance to speak as possible. I'd also remember you to please state your name and address when you come up to the podium to speak. So you all were quite vocal last time, so I assumed there'd be people who would want to speak at this meeting as well.
You know, I do just have a quick question for the applicant, real quick. Did you meet with the community, again, I know you had some conversation post the meeting while you were here, but did you bring the community?
Yes, we did. We had a meeting with them on November 10th, I believe was the date.
Okay.
December 10th.
Okay.
Here, actually.
Okay. All right, very good.
With those that showed up.
My name is Alice Albert. My address is 2847 Pebble Drive. First, I would just like to say that there's a reason in November there was over 100 people at this meeting. We were never notified by Evans Farm of the difference in the amendment to the zoning. Ten years...in 2016, it was a lot of wine and dine, a lot of coffee chats, a lot of fun. Here's what we're doing. And then there was nothing until the neighbors that abut this property received notice and we informed the rest of our neighbors, and 100 people showed up to a zoning meeting. I can assure you that you probably have never had that amount at your zoning meeting before. Maybe you have, maybe have not even had this many. We're opposed to it. The amendment, we're opposed to it. It's zoned a single family. It needs to stay a single family. There's a reason that you have such opposition. I appreciate everything Epcun's done. I don't devalue what they're doing. It's a business decision on their part. I appreciate them. Adding, taking away two units, wow, that's great. Maybe adding the landscaping, but no amount of landscaping next to my property is going to change my mind. I'm 85 feet from a major connecting road. How nice that some of my other neighbors got 105 feet. Wow. I'm 85 feet from a major connecting road with a four-foot mounding of some evergreens. Big whoop. It's not wanted, it's not needed, and the amount of people in this room should tell you exactly how we feel. It's not rocket science. Single family, it's zoned that way. The amendment is a no.
Is there anybody else from the public that would like to...has any comments concerning Okay. Up, wait.
My name is Sarah Albert. I'm at 2847 Pebble Drive, Lewis Center. You've already heard from my wife and her comment about the 85 feet from the thoroughfare in there. In addition to the comment about we're not changing the density, the density's not changing. Evans Farm, 1,200 square acres, the density's not changing. The density in the quadrant that we're talking about is changing. Otherwise, you wouldn't be voting on the amendment. They're changing the text of the document to modify the density of the quadrant we're talking about. We keep putting lipstick on it and saying we're not changing the density. You are changing the density. And then as far as the thoroughfare, you guys are also aware that in Berlin, 300 units for Rockford Homes is going in that's going to abut that. You talk about this thoroughfare, once you start construction on Old State, once they start...where are they going to cut through to get through? They're going to cut through that subdivision, through Epcun, and then through into Rock Drive. So the neighbors that sit there, all of a sudden, are now going to get that traffic. Again, traffic light on Old State. We all know what Old State's like today. When I was at the Berlin's zoning meeting and brought that to their attention, that this was the intent, they didn't know that. I don't know if you guys are aware of the 300 units that's going for Rockford Drive. And they admit it, Old State's a problem today, that the traffic patterns are a problem today. All you're doing is exacerbating it by moving high-density units. When it was originally zoned, the high-density units were where? Inside of Evans Farm, not on the periphery. We're now moving the high-density units from the middle, which is what was zoned 10 years ago, and now we're moving it to the periphery. Again, 1,200 units, if I shuffle the deck a little bit, is still 1,200 units, and the density is X and Y, but you're moving it away from where they said, where the community agreed to it. 10 years ago, you would have had this same fight because we would have said, "We don't want condominium units, we don't want high-density units abutting our property." Now, 10 years later, Evans Farm's answer is, "Oh, we're not changing the density, it's 1,200 acres." Sure, it is 1,200 acres. You're not going to shuffle it until five, 10 years from now when, "Oh, I've got this leftover land sitting by the railroad track. Hey, I want to tweak the density a little bit because it doesn't sell." It's not settling where you originally approved the zoning, and now you're abuting it to my property, and everybody's trying to say, "Well, this is a wonderful thing, this is great." Epcun's tried, but again, they're just selling a product. We live there. None of these people are going to live in that subdivision. We live there today, and we've been there for 20 years. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Lisa Ledke. I live at 2945 Pebble Drive, one of the houses that are impacted directly with this development. So first of all, thank you, Evans Farm, for taking the time...or Evans Farm, sorry, Epcun, for taking the time to talk to us and to make some amendments to that. I really appreciate that. However, and what you've heard already and what you'll continue to hear tonight, it really does come down to the integrity of our neighborhood and the difference between doing these townhomes and patio homes versus the single-family homes. If you look at this... If you look at this layout that they have here versus the original one from Evans Farm, the other piece of it that you guys may not realize is like this English Drive, right? What this is doing, and this is kind of what we talked about the other night, is that it's separating the communities, right? Now you have our Bryn Mawr that back here, you have this major roadway and then you have that community over there, right? That is mixed, not single-family, it's mixed as townhomes, as patio homes, it's all of the things that are different than ours. So now you're splitting us, right? Before, if you look at the old layout, it was single-family, community, like neighborhood, right? It all, it connected, we understand that it's going to connect. We anticipated that there was going to be development behind us. That wasn't an issue, we're not fighting that. But it was, it was almost like a continuation of our neighborhood, just like they did in Meadow. Meadows, it's called Meadows, right? Where like old Bryn Mawr connects to old Bryn Mawr, connects to Meadows, connects to Evans, it's like a nice flowing neighborhood feel. Like, nobody contested Meadows because it went along with our integrity, it went along with what the spirit of our neighborhood, right? We moved to this neighborhood to raise our family, raise in a neighborhood full of children, right? I mean, we've already talked before about all the safety concerns and all of that. But this, inadvertently, it just, it separates it, right? So now you've got two, two separate neighborhoods divided by a major parkway that, you know, I'm not even exactly clear on what that speed limit's going to be or anything else like that. So now you've really divided us. And again, it goes again to the integrity of why we are, why we are here, why we moved to Lewis Center, right? We wanted that family feel. We wanted our families to have children to be able to play with in the neighborhoods. And, I mean, this is just, it's destroying all of that. So I, I'm requesting that you guys deny this and go back to the drawing board if you need to, but it needs to stay a neighborhood, right? We shifted, you shifted all of these townhomes and things from the railroad tracks where they were originally supposed to be into this area. Like, keep the integrity of our neighborhoods. This is what makes Lewis Center great. Don't destroy it by starting to allow the development of this stuff to happen because it's just going to continue. And then it's going to destroy what the Lewis Center is all about. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public who would like to speak? Okay. Now's your chance.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Chris Everest. I'm at 5245 Meadow Bend, just off of the rock, proposed rock connection. I actually have a couple of questions that I wrote down. First, I'm curious what platted means and I think that was kind of glossed over and I'm just curious what that means.
Okay. Do you want to list all your questions or do you want them?
Oh, no, we can answer them as I go. Go ahead.
So actually, I would probably defer to Rob what platted means, but generally, it's more of like a real estate legal, how the property is recorded into law.
Okay, so maybe a little bit more context as to why they suggested that.
Sure, I can take that one and Mr. Hart can correct me if I'm wrong because I am not a lawyer. But, so plating is when property is subdivided into smaller individual lots. So we talk about those lots being individually platted. So each lot has its own unique property lines which are split off from the properties around it and then that's owned individually as compared to a condominium lot where the lot ownership is shared essentially.
As well as that the county's requiring us to plat those 15 lots because they front a public road.
The very north side, the northeast-west street that stops, those 15 lots that abut that are the platted lots.
Those are public roads.
So clarify which roads are public again?
On the north side of the site, the east-west road, then the north-south road that connects to that road and then all the way, English Drive is public, as well as Rock Drive. Those are all required by Delaware County.
To be public.
And they're all public.
And then those are where you have to have platted lots?
Correct. Anything that fronts the public road.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that explanation. The second question I had is, I'm not clear on who the staff is in the staff recommendation that you spoke of, so could you just explain that a little bit? That seems a little bit vague.
Sure. So staff is myself and we have three other members in our zoning department. So Eric Gietzke is our senior zoning officer, I am the zoning director, and then Michelle Bonney is our township administrator, who is also involved in these, and she was a former zoning director.
Okay, thank you. And are you all elected or hired or assigned by the township? How does that work?
So our staff, we are appointed, as is actually the zoning commission. So zoning commission are these five individuals here. They are Orange Township residents who are volunteering their time. Eric and I and the rest of our zoning staff, we work here in the building every day, so we are appointed by the board trustees, who are your elected officials.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that and you'll have to pardon my ignorance because this is some of my first exposure to the township proceedings. The next thing I'll say is that I'm definitely in the current majority that I don't want to see this zoning proposal change happen. You know, I moved here to have families around with children and I think proposing a 55 and over community will definitely stunt that community growth. And, you know, I just wanted to make my, make my opinion known to the zoning commission and I hope you're able to vote no. My final question is, if you could give us a little bit more explanation to your criteria and how you judge or vote, because it is still unclear to me how the board needs to vote or how to make decisions. And I, if you could explain that, that'd be great.
I can try to explain that briefly, but at the end of the public comment period, I was going to have the board members ask their questions and state their concerns or opinions or support for this application. Generally, we are people, residents from the community. We are appointed. We generally come from various areas of, to try to create a balanced board. I have a background in planning, specializing in historic preservation and urban design, and I'm also a licensed architect. So, and I've been doing this for, I want to say, 20 some odd years, but I've only served on the township since 2008 in various capacities. Other members of the board have backgrounds sometimes in real estate, sometimes in law, sometimes in architecture, finance, business. Does that help?
Yeah, that does help and I'm very much looking forward to hearing any questions or comments that the zoning commission has.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
No problem.
Hi there, Steve Blakemore, 5195 Sandy Drive, so I'm just one street south of the property line that we're talking about. I just have some questions. I was here at the original, and first of all, thank you for your participation and listening and whatnot. I do echo those comments, I appreciate that. My question, as I was at the first meeting, I had kind of an epiphany that it seemed like there were a couple of major factors that drove the design change. One was the requirement for the road to have no direct driveway access. I think that was mentioned as a significant concern. And then also the wetlands. And if you look at that curve, it kind of limits some of the options if you have those two constraints. I guess I have a question is, was there a consider, because I do think the comments from the community, I think are very fair and appropriate about the density and the changes in, in the design feel conceptually. So I guess my question is, was there a consideration of a design that had the road arch north as opposed to south that connecting, is that English? So have English arch north and then turn south to make the connection to South Old State, have more single-family homes there to provide more of a consistent buffer and then have more density going north? I guess that's the question. And if there wasn't a consideration, should there be?
Hi. First of all, I want to thank all of you guys for coming. I know I said this the last time, it's
Can you state your names?
Yeah, I will do that.
Thank you.
Tyler Jackson, Kemley Horn, 7965 North High Street. So appreciate everyone being here. Couple comments, such questions from the previous gentleman of where English Drive connects to South Old State. That was determined with the county in the original traffic study to connect across from Sun Glow, which is the community to the east side of South Old State. And there was a comment in there as well about driveway connections to English Drive and that is correct, that the county will not allow private or individual driveway connections to English Drive. That's why we have the offsetting roads from, the private roads from English Drive. Thank you.
But can you ask, if it could go north, start north, drive this out instead of starting south and then working north to connect to Sun Glow? Is there any explanation for that?
So there are county requirements on the level of curvature that you can have on that level of use road. To put it plainly, we only can curve so much at once. And if you start going north, you start to result in area that's kind of, put this plainly of, it's not big enough to put a home, but it's too small for usable open space. So you kind of end up with like kind of an in-between type of use. And so this alignment of English Drive allowed for the best use of the land between English and the wetland.
Okay, can I ask you a question? So in Evans Farm
Okay, you all, some of you have already stated your name and address, but can you all remember to please state, yes, come to the podium, state your name and address because this all has to go on the, on the public record so the trustees know what your concerns are when they're reviewing this.
Sure. It's Lisa Ledkey, again, 2945 Pebble Drive. So just a quick question about this street, because again, in the original, it wasn't a major parkway. If you looked, there was homes off this street, right? This is where my biggest concern is, is this street and the dividing of, it's taking away from the single-family neighborhood. So can you elaborate on this street? Like, it's a major street now, right? So like what are, there's, you're not allowed to have single-family homes, you're not having anything connecting to it because it's such a major street. What's that speed limit? Qualifications, all that stuff?
It's a 35 mile per hour road. And it, the conceptual layout that came through the township that was approved was approved through the township prior to the traffic study being approved by the township.
And this traffic study was the one 10 years ago?
Yes.
Okay.
Confirmed since then.
So when we say it's been confirmed since then, I feel like a lot has happened in 10 years, right? So that kind of, that kind of gives me, like, doesn't sound, sit right with me if there's a traffic study done 10 years ago, is it still about? I mean
And he says it's been confirmed.
It's been confirmed.
But what is being confirmed, what does that mean? Can you elaborate?
Yeah. Can you take to the podium and try to speak to these issues?
Definition of confirmed.
So the traffic study was done back in, I believe it was 2016, approved by the county and all of the traffic flows were based on the total number of units provided within Evans Farm with directional traffic to South Old State, to Piot Road, et cetera, all the major thoroughfares through there. And the traffic engineers in my office took a look at the change with this layout and the traffic patterns did not significantly change due to the reduced traffic from the senior housing. It's all driven through the county engineer and their traffic standards.
And one more, one more comment question. So, and I'm not trying to hold up this, but reduced traffic through senior living. This is an assumption. There is nothing restricting anybody who's not a senior from living in this housing. Is that correct?
Just data and facts.
So, so the
Tom, can you, can you finish your statement?
The fact is, is that Epcun communities does typically have an older selling, buying population. But we are in Olentangie schools, right? There is nothing that is going to say that anybody cannot purchase a home in this neighborhood, right? So although it's an assumption that this is how it's going to go and that the traffic is going to be this because of that, that is not a given, right? It's not a fact, it's just something that we are assuming, but it could go any way. So I don't feel like that's a valid point to make an approval on when, you know, that's not, there's nothing in this saying that that's exactly how it's going to be. Nobody, you have to be 55 and over and this is how it's going to go. That's just my
So again, state your name and address.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Tom Hart, 5029 Cemetery Road. Could we go back to slide six in our presentation? Again, we have a 25-year, I think Kelly said, fact and history pattern in this township with six existing communities. And the reason these numbers are what they are, with 537 existing Epcun homes in this Orange Township and 16 children. Our average occupancy for Epcun is 1.7 people. So we have a lot of single, you know, house, single-person households. We have very, very few children. That compares with the demographic in the township that's typical census demographic for Southern Delaware County, Delaware County in general, about three people per household. So that's factual, it's historic, it's on the record, it's recognized by the regulators of our traffic and we can say with confidence that we produce about half the traffic of a typical conventional single-family home, you know, like in Bryn Mawr. Because single-family trips, based on national data, produce about 10 vehicle trips per day because there's a family there, conventional single-family homes. Our homes produce about half that. The most notable part of that really though is the peak traffic numbers. Our peak traffic numbers, because that's rush hour, in particular, the PM rush hour is critical. You know, in the morning, there's a rush hour, but people go to work and do different things at different times. School, work schedules are often a little bit different. In the PM, everybody travels in about that same hour to 90 minutes. The best thing about our communities for traffic is that we're low compared to single-family conventional, single-family in that PM peak. That's a major benefit of senior housing. Madam Chair, and again, I, these are, these are, this is 25 years worth of data. It's about occupancy, it's about, you know, I raised three children, I knew when my kids were in the house, we had a lot more trips because we had dancing and practice and things we had to get at the store typically in the evening. And so that's just a known, a fact And so that, that's just a, a known, a fact that's, that's, that comes out in the data, and particularly with Epcun. The other main factor with Epcun is the design of the homes themselves. You know, they're, they're designed for, for empty nesters and aging in place. They're not set up and nor, on the inside or the outside, in terms of amenities, for families, and they don't attract families. Yes, there are times when the grandmother gets a child temporarily, there's a divorce, somebody passes, there, there are, there are, there's no legal restriction on a family moving into one of these homes, but it's not designed for them, the amenities aren't designed for them. It's, it's card club and bocce, not frisbee and soccer in, in the, in the open spaces here. And so we, we simply don't attract the nuclear family, that, those are facts. Couple other points. Again, you know, we're here with a modification, we're not, we're not at rezoning stage. This is a single-family site, this is a single-family plan. It's not something else. It's owner-occupied, it's single-family, we have three different types of products, but they're all single-family, owner-occupied. With, you know, with, with the track record that's on that, on that screen, and frankly, in a lot of other jurisdictions around central Ohio. Yes, it's true, we are proposing more units than the original plan that was approved with Evans Farm back in the day. But we think that, we think we have less impact because of the traffic, because of the lack of children, because of the occupancy of people per unit is, is way different. And because we've provided a better open space plan, that open space behind the units, you know, on the border of the property with Bryn Mar is passive. It's, it's owned and operated by a condo association. It will be taken care of in perpetuity compared to what, you know, I, I would think if Evans built, built similar homes to what the Bryn Mar people have, they would have very nice backyards, those people take care of their property, take care of their backyards. But, you know, there can be lots of different structures and activities. There's simply not a lot going on in the open space behind some, some Epcun courtyard homes. That, that's, that's a fact, and, and the, and the, the reason to support that open space is because the management of that open space will be uniform, professional, and forever, and consistent. One more point I want to make, just briefly, Madam Chair, and that is, there's a lot of support in the comprehensive plan of this township for senior housing, for empty nester communities, for, for really diverse types of housing. And I cite page 73, where, where the community was surveyed, and there was a lot of analysis done on this. It also shows up on page 74 and 75. The, the comp plan in this community is calling for more and different types of senior housing because supply is low. In this community, for senior housing, it's, it's low for any housing, but it's particularly low for senior housing, and supply helps affordability, it helps access. This is not an affordable housing proposal by any means. We're, I think we're, our courtyard homes are, I think we're, we're, we're projecting they'll be at 635, I believe, and--
Average.
Average. In, in some, in some townships in Delaware County, that gets, that price gets pumped up quite a bit by the finishes people pick. You know, the customer profile of these folks who buy Epcun homes are people who have done pretty well economically over their lives, they usually, in many cases, don't have a mortgage anymore, they're pretty good neighbors. You know, in, in terms of how they live, how they live quieter, and, and kind of their low impact, their low traffic, their low, their low school impact. And frankly, the schools get a lot more tax revenue from an Epcun community with fewer kids to educate than really any other type of housing. But again, this township in this decade will approach 25% of its demographic will be 55 and older. So there, there's demand for the product. It is complementary to, to the existing, single-family homes for the reason that it's not going to compete with people trying to resell or, or the values of those homes. It's, it's a different product, a different market segment, a different group of folks who are good neighbors. A road will have to go through this area. There is a road through this area in general, on the old, on the old Evans Plan. It's, it's true that we're, we're providing open space and buffering and mounding between the road and that, and that property boundary, where the old Evans Plan had housing, but there has to be a, a significant connector road through this area, somewhat governed by the ravine and, and, you know, the, the natural area that sits just to the north. That's, that somewhat governs what you can do on the site, so that road's going to be there. Thank you, Madam Chair, for your patience, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Madam Chair, because the four points were made, I have specific questions for those four points. Can I ask while Tom is here? Yeah. Yeah, sure. The first question on, on slide five and six, when is this data from? The slides five and six that you present about the number of average daily trips and also the number of kids in Epcun communities, when is this data from?
Kelly Finkhauser, 500 Stonehenge Parkway, 43017. This data comes from Kimley Horn, and the, which I've cited here, they did a traffic evaluation, and they pull these numbers from the ITE, the Engineers Transportation, Institute of Transportation. That's where these numbers come from. It's a national, yeah.
Not where this comes from, when?
Oh, when.
Are they, are they 2024 numbers?
Yes, current, correct.
They're updated.
They're updated numbers.
They're updated periodically.
Based on current industry information.
Okay, and what about the slide six, the Epcun communities?
Correct. So we know the communities we've built, we know the home, the number of homes we've built in them. We've reached out to the EMIS coordinator with Olentangie School District, and she provided, I basically asked her for the streets. I provided streets and said, how, asked her if she could provide how many school-aged children are living on these streets, and they can provide that, as vaguely as they possibly can, they can provide that without sharing names. And they provided these numbers. And I have emails from that department, and that's where these numbers come from. And anybody can get these numbers by reaching out to them.
So basically, these are current numbers?
It's current, correct. Yeah, I received these just ahead of our meeting in November.
Got it.
Yeah.
Got it. And coming to your question about these Epcun community homes are designed, you, you keep mentioning that designed for a, a particular age group. Can you talk about the design elements that make them designed for--
Better people than me.
Kelly Finkhauser again, 500 Stonehenge Parkway, Dublin, Ohio, 43017. These homes, if you haven't ever been in one, which I assume you haven't based on the question, they're wonderful for people that want to move into a home, to live there for the rest of their lives safely. We offer no steps on the first floor. You can live fully, your, every room that you would need, primary suite, on the first floor. There's a small, beautiful, private courtyard space that's low maintenance, you don't have to worry about keeping things up and having any burden of having yard, yard maintenance. It's a small courtyard that you maintain, and then everything else is maintained by the association. It's really a lock-and-leave lifestyle for people that want to travel and people that simply can't physically do the maintenance. It, I mean, those are the biggest attractions for our folks, as well as the community. We have, the community that we've created, it fosters human connection. You have folks that come together, that want to be in a community where there are activities, that they can be together, do activities together, meet new people, a place where their grandkids can come and there are other grandkids. It truly is a community that you can feel, and it, and it fosters human connection. Those are the, the big points of what makes an Epcun community serve that demographic of a baby boomer.
Okay.
Does that answer the question?
So you mentioned there are no steps on the primary floor.
Correct.
I was just looking through these, some of them do have second floor.
Yes.
How do they get there?
It's first-floor living, there are no steps on the first floor. You can live completely on the first floor, and if you, if you need an upstairs to add a bedroom for more space for visitors, you can add an upstairs, but you never have to go up there because your whole living's on the first floor. It's really for guests. I'm sorry, that's, that's what I meant by that. First-floor living.
My friend said, "How do you get there?"
How do you get there? No, no, I'm sorry.
It's a first-floor master--
Yes.
Got it.
Yes, it's first-floor living, everything.
And I just have a slight question, because not all of your homes have a second level, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct, correct. So that's a great point to bring up. About 64 of our homes are two-bedroom ranches.
Right.
Period. And I think that leaves 36, 36 homes will be three bedrooms. That's our average for our corporate, for our corporate homes. That's what we, that's, that's what we build. We build ranches, period. And then people can add an upstairs if they need some extra space, but they're all ranches.
And you build accessible for, disability accessible if needed with the showers.
It's, you really couldn't say that they're accessible, that we provide more space so that--
Right, you do.
Yes, we, we call it, it's universal design, it provides more space to move through the home.
Yeah. I have a question regarding the conversation about, you know, we care about the community and so forth. Tell me, when you say you care about the community, what is your thought process behind that? What does that mean to you, when you say you care about the community, care about Lewis Center? I presume you don't reside here, right?
I, I do care about the community in Lewis Center. I didn't make that comment.
Okay.
So I can't speak to who said that. I don't remember anybody saying that.
I thought it was just you.
No, I'm sorry, no, no.
Okay, well, let me, let me explore a little further.
Okay.
So we talked about, he mentioned that, you know, it's affordable, and then he says, "Well, these are not affordable space," right? And the reason I'm asking is because I work in the affordable housing space, and it's absolutely what's much needed. And I know that many of the challenges that I hear from people who are aging, or who have already aged or retired, who live in the community, they're challenged with the tax burden already. And so what I was trying to connect with that, that nexus there was, if you care about the community, but these are not really designed to make them affordable for the people who are already in the community, who in many cases, or some cases, have to leave our community because of the taxes going up. So I'm trying to draw your commitment to, hey, we love this community, we love housing, we want to make it convenient for people who are retiring or empty nesters and that sort of thing, but yet, it is at a price rate not trying to drive anybody's houses down in price. I'm trying to understand, is this just a desire, hey, we want to build houses so that we can call it houses? And, and, don't get me wrong, I'm in business, I love business, encourage you to make as much as you can. But I'm trying to understand, you know, and, and a little challenged by the community as well, because the community says in one breath, "We want kids everywhere," but then they're like, "Oh, we don't want all these kids all over the place." So help me understand how we got there to where we are. Does that make sense?
It makes sense.
Okay.
Just by background, I've, I've been, I don't work, I don't work at Epcun, I'm a, I'm an outside attorney. I have been involved in our, our Building Industry Association for about 25 years. I've been an affordable housing advocate that whole time, the whole time. I've been places where I tried to zone apartments in affordable, single-family, where some of the things that were said to me would shock people in this room, okay? And right in this region, you know, I know a lot about the battle of, of affordable Supply is a huge part of that in our, in our whole market right now, that's a whole different discussion, but the comp plan does speak to that in, in, with regard to senior housing, that really any housing moves one folk, one group of folks out of what they're in and into something else is a positive, because it churns, and it typically, new housing opens up the, the availability of existing housing. Now, having said all that, and, and back to the comp plan, this, this community, Orange Township, will approach 25%, 55 demographic, 55-plus demographic in this decade. It'll, it'll get there, just right, right from the comp plan. Having said that, we're, this is Epcun, they're not pretending to be affordable housing. They're, they're not, they are what they are. I can remember Epcun from the beginning of my career, when they tried really hard to stay, you know, like, like a Nissan. You know, they tried to stay like, like a, like a good, solid, you know, middle-market design and, and, and home in that, in that price range. But they get pushed. They get pushed by finished materials, they get pushed by their, really, the demographic of their buyer is real sound financially, and, and they push them up to these price points that, you know, we just did a site in Concord Township where, where the, they're building homes at 900,000, you know, because that's, it's a different product. But that's what happens to Epcun, they get pushed into being a luxury brand because that's what the market wants. And, you know, in Orange Township, we will, a, a company like Epcun is eventually going to take people out of these beautiful, single-family communities who want to downsize, who want a different lifestyle, who want amenities and are willing to pay higher dues for all their outside maintenance. Again, you know, these guys and some of their communities have essentially a social director, a cruise director, if you will, they have clubhouses, they have amenities that are set up for people who are in a different age group, who want a different lifestyle. Our whole point is, that lifestyle's quieter, it's, it's a good neighbor as far as that lifestyle. It's, it's just, it's, it's, and at their price ranges, it's a positive thing for values around them. But we aren't, we aren't here today trying to say we're affordable housing. No, sir.
Okay, all right. One other quick question, because, you know, the community is saying, hey, these were, and I know you make the argument that they're still single-family, but they have a perception of individual homes and that sort of thing. Was there any consideration for any other type of product that may emulate or match that? And the reason I'm thinking of that, I'm thinking of what is called Home Dominiums that was over off of wherever it was, but where it had the same kind of idea, you had your own separate home, but had people to take care of the lawn and all of that stuff, was, you know, presumably attractive to, you know, ranch styles or what have you?
Kelly Finkhauser, 500 Stonehenge Parkway, Dublin, 43017. This property parcel is owned by the master developer of Evans Farm. And we're working with that developer on the product that we build. We don't know who else that they've spoken with. I know that we have demand, and we believe that there's excitement for home buyers that want to be in this, this neighborhood and part of this community, and we wouldn't be doing this if we didn't feel that demand was there.
Do you have anything else to say, Mr. Hart? Okay. What I'd like to do then is I, it looks like there's a few more public comments, if we can go ahead and close that up. And then the commission, we've already asked some questions, I'm sure we'll have follow-up questions, that we can go ahead and do that. So I'd like to go ahead and finish public comments. So state your name and address.
Sarah Albert, 2847 Pebble Drive, Lewis Center, Ohio. I, I'd like to comment on two things that were said. One was regarding the drive. The gentleman said, "Well, the county has set the road." The county set the access point, the configuration of the road inside the development, they submitted their plan and said, "Well, this road be adequate." So the county did not say, "No, put the road 85 feet from my home." The road, the county said, "Put, you can take it based off of that configuration, that's acceptable." So it's not the county driving it. They submitted the plan that they submitted, and the county said, "That road would work as it connects." So again, 85 feet from my home, a half-acre lot is 210, I believe. Second comment is, the gentleman says, "There's a demand, there's a need for this." I don't disagree with him, there is a demand and a need. Evans Farm has 1,200 acres undeveloped, a large portion is still quote undeveloped, that does not abut my property or anybody else's property. But they're not developing that, they're not putting it by the railroad track because it doesn't sell. You're, you're increasing the density on my property, if it's, the product is needed and wanted, all we're saying is, you can build it. Build it in 1,200 acres that doesn't abut our property. Do it all day. It was agreed to be half-acre lots, single-family homes. Now they're a sixth of an acre, a twelfth of an acre, but the density doesn't change because it's 1,200 acres. Take your product, that, everybody says it's a great product, everybody says it's needed, everybody says it's demanded. You've got 1,200 acres, you've got 110 residents came to the first meeting and demanded, "We don't want this, we don't want this." You know, you know, the-- You know, you know, the developer says, "No, here, I've got twelve-hundred acres. We're not changing the density." You've got other places to put this product? You choose not to. If you approve it, you choose to disregard the public that's saying, "We don't want the product."
Michelle Custodial, five-two-seven-seven Meadowbend Drive. And first of all, I want to say that I'm here because I'm part of this Bryn Mawr community. I live off a rock, we're off a rock. That road is obviously going to connect to me. But from my community neighbors, I learned about this information here. So, I'm here because of a community member, not because I was notified by the zoning commission this was going to be impacting me initially. I want to say, you know, as a zoning team, what good is the zoning rules if they're not being followed? Ten years ago, Evans Farm, the proposal that planned master community was approved at that point in time, right? You know, those, they were custom homes. They were building these homes, custom builders. Well, obviously, we know the custom builder market did not pan out. Those custom builders slowly left one by one. And now, we're looking at Evans Farm is trying to sell the community now to Epcun. So, my question to you guys is why is it not Epcun having to follow what the original master plan community was established for? You know, me as a homeowner, when we moved in over eleven years ago, we had to follow, we don't get to tell our HOA what we want to do. We follow those rules and covenants that have been established already for that area. So, if the zoning commission approved this stuff for Evans Farm ten years ago, why don't they have to come in and just put the Epcun name on it and follow what was already established with that? So, that was my question with that. I also want to say that, you know, they're marketing this development as a senior. I am a senior and I have children in the Olentangie School District. And I can guarantee you, I am not the only one in our neighborhood with, that have children in Olentangie. So, we are probably over that five or six, just in our little section of Bryn Mawr. So, I'm going to say that I'm a senior. Sorry. I have to use my glasses because I can't see because I'm a senior. But I'm not going to call anybody else on that. So, you know, there's been talk about this two-access points, that the county requires two-access points. Why, well, sorry, I have my scribble notes here. Two-access points. Why can, why does the boat, road have to go this way? Why can't it be a loop, right? Why can't it go off of Old State and go back to Old State? That's the big loop. Why does it have to go through to Evans Farm? And I'm going to talk about that road that where it eventually connects over to Evans Farm. My first concern when I drove through that Evans Farm property is that main circle, that's the community, the heart of Evans Farm. That road is so narrow. If we have an emergency, how are you going to get a fire truck and a police car during that road at the same time? That road is extremely narrow. But yet, that road, that road is established, right? And then I think they said that this English road, it's too narrow to have any houses. But yet, we have a something over in Evans Farm, the main heart of the community, that's a narrow road. Why can't English be a small, narrow road? On top of that, with the English thing, that road, right? You know, we cut through here. We all know where the shortcuts are through these neighborhoods. We know where there's not going to be cut through, right? When you have, and I, the picture's not there, but if there's no driveways there, people are just going to keep driving. When you have driveways off of that road, you're going to be cognate that there's kids, there's players, there could be dogs walking out, running, you know, things there. Our community does not have sidewalks. I think this, the planned one might have sidewalks. I can't tell, it's small. So, those are concerns that I have. Sorry. The trees, you know, they talked about these nice buffering of the trees and all of that stuff. It's my understanding, or I'm hopeful, that Old State is going to be expanded. What's going to happen to all of that nice buffering trees that are being established on the Old State land, right? Are they just going to get cut down when Old State gets expanded? Sorry, I'm trying to talk fast. The, the other thing is, you know, I mentioned I've been here over eleven years. We moved here from Arizona. When you think of Arizona, what is it? Master plan communities for seniors, right? There's a lot of seniors that live out in master plan communities. We lived, we had the opportunity to live in quite a few master plan communities. Those master plan communities, you know, they don't always materialize how they're supposed to. Obviously, we, I'll just go with what we saw with Evans Farm, right? The market was not there to purchase these and they keep selling things off and everything like that. So, I mean, like where that lake is, that could easily get torn off. Or, you know, if it doesn't work out for Epcun, who's going to come in next? And then what are we going to be having conversations with about? So, you know, you've got to think about that from a master plan community. And I think I already talked about senior living. And, you know, that traffic study, quite honestly, I mentioned we have children. Our, our children play softball. At Jennings Park, there's going, the traffic is going to be horrendous. This cut-through English is going to be a cut-through. All of those people that are going to come from, off of thirty-six, thirty-seven are coming through there. You're going to minimum, for one game of softball, you minimally will have probably forty-five cars per single game. And with experience, children have to be there an hour, hour and a half ahead of time. So, you're going to need ninety parking spots for one field. And I don't even know how many planned fields there are, but those are a lot of cars. So, because those kids can't drive by themselves. So, you're going to add on all those additional cars and all of those will eventually feed through English. And, sorry, I'm, so, and I did have a question. Oh, and you know, talked about the courtyard ranches and everything. Well, then just put like ranches in, just make the single-family ranches, going back to the original, you know, the Evans Farm plan community that your team or your predecessor has approved, you know? I mean, really, what good are rules if we don't have to follow them or we can always change them? So, but I'll step away. And I did have a question about the projections about the five or six children from that whole development, but I think you guys answered that. But I'm going to say that I don't know that I believe it. Like I said, I'm a senior with kids in Olentangie. And there's other people in the room and I'm not going to call them out, so, thank you.
Oh, sorry. Hi there. Johnny Din, five-three-zero-four Meadowbend Drive. So, I live in Meadowbend, in Bryn Mawr, but I live on the, on the west side of Bryn Mawr. So, my, my first question is, you say phase three of the development that, that Rock is to, to open, correct? When is phase three? And how many phases are there?
Can you answer maybe ask all your questions?
Okay. So then, so phase three, so when is phase three? Then, you guys wouldn't own it, but west of this development, when would that be developed, right? So, that could be ten, twenty, twenty years from now. So, the only open area would be from Old State and from Rock, okay? So, the easiest way to get to Lewis Center without the traffic from Old State would be, go down Rock, cut through, go down Meadowbend where I live, cut through the Meadows, cut through Evans Farm, and out to Lewis Center and onto whatever direction you're going. So, all that traffic, because Old State is already congested, okay? The plan is five, ten years to widen that, right? We're adding a hundred, a hundred and sixty homes, right? Two cars per home, three-hundred-and-twenty cars, you know, we can do the math. So, all those cars in a cut-through, through my front yard, okay? Not causing any extra traffic onto Old State. So, that, that's my comment there. So, then, you know, you say that Epcun's a community. It's a community on themselves, okay? So, Bryn Mawr, Meadows, Evans, that, that's already open. I have, my kids play with Evans Farm kids. My kids play with Meadows kids. They walk to their houses, they're biking to their houses, okay? So, we're all one community. Where this community, they're going to block it off, be themselves, block everybody else out and be a community on their own, okay? So, all the amenities that, that are there just for Epcun. Sidewalks are open, right? But it's their own community. Where these other communities that has this flow, is a flow because all the families interact with each other. They, they, they're a community, it's a family. So, saying that it's a community is great. And I don't disagree that the, the need is there, okay? I, I just disagree with the placement, okay? Also, if you drive up Old State, you don't see this type of housing. You see large yards, family, kids out playing, on the street, in the backyard, right? We want kids in the area. I'm not, I moved to this area because I wanted to have my kids play with other kids, right? So, if we're going to have, if we're going to have another community, it should be a community full of kids. That's one reason why Lewis Center is one of the best school districts in Ohio, in the nation, because there are kids here and we support the schools. Thank you.
Eric Custodial, five-two-seven-seven Meadowbend Drive. Is it possible to bring up the, the slide that had the, um, the count?
We'll do it at the end, yeah.
That had the, I think it was slide five. It had the, like the old, can, is English changing in terms of the type of road it was? Because in the old layout, it has homes right up against it. And then now, they're saying that it's, it can't have any driveways on it. So, is it changing? Or one of the proposals is to change it?
I will, I will let the applicant answer that, but yes, that is my understanding that the county has dictated the road requirements. That is something that the county engineer with the public road, they make those decisions.
Okay. So, so the, like my concern with that, even if everything they say in terms of it's a fifty-five, it'll be less traffic for what they're adding, if that road becomes more of a throughput road instead of a neighborhood road, there will be a lot of cut-through, not necessarily from that community, but just because it connects to Old State and it's a big road. It happens in Glen Oak all the time. And as long as, if it was a neighborhood road, it's less. But once you make it a bigger road, it becomes a cut-through road regardless of what they're building there. Once it's bigger, people will cut through it. All of us know how bad Old State is in terms of traffic. And all that cut-through after phase three will be coming through Bryn Mawr. And that's why we all think this should be a no. Or, again, they say that the county dictates that Rock Road connects. I would still say, like what Sarah had said, really, the county just says, "Okay, what you have proposed kind of makes sense." Propose that you don't connect Rock Road. Because it will be a cut-through regardless of, their community may not cut through, but everyone driving there will cut through.
Are there any more comments from the public?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll have, then you'll be the last one and we can have the applicant respond to this list of questions.
Conrad Bowman from four-eight-eight-nine Gables Crossing. I think I'm the only representative from Avonlea, so probably bring a little different feedback and comments. I think one of the things that's most concerning about this proposal is it's a micro piece of a much larger plan. So, in Avonlea, we're getting a very similar proposal in Berlin Township on the north with a huge increase in houses. We don't know what's to the west of this plan. And that could be another huge increase in population and houses. We don't know that because the master plan for Evans Farm has never truly been updated based off of that initial proposal. So, we don't really understand from a public perspective, what is changing with all of these little side pieces being cut off? The other thing that's concerning is directly across from us, there's a brand-new development with single-family, large homes that was approved by this township. Why was that allowed to happen? And now, this is being brought up as a change in plans. That was a exact neighborhood that was connected to Evans Farm. So, why is that not continued as precedent to maintain the single-family home neighborhood? So, there's just confusion on how individual things are done in the master plan and where there's variances. I guess the other question that I'm not sure if the township knows is, as we've had at Evans Farm and we've had the Meadows, we've had similar houses increasing our property value in this area. Do we have any studies or understanding of, if these were lower-priced houses, what that's going to do to property values for the rest of the township and how that directly impacts school funding? The other question that I have is especially based off of this IRAM. And being selfish as one of the, the lone houses on the north, the initial proposal had a huge pond separating Avonlea from this community. That pond is dramatically shrunken and shifted to the middle. So, my question is understanding, why was that barrier dramatically changed? Why were there five or six houses added almost indiscriminately to shove them in? And what can be done on the north, similar to the feedback that's been talked about here on this southern kind of area of this housing? Those are the three questions I'd like to understand. Thank you.
Just to clarify, sir, you talked about the single-family homes on Braywood Lane, right? Right across?
Directly south of, it's directly across from Avonlea, right in the east. There's a new.
The Bob Webb subdivision.
Yeah. That was part of Evans Farm. That was old.
It's a skillet.
It's at east of Old State.
Yeah.
It's the Bob Webb subdivision.
Braywood Lane.
Briarwood.
Just to clarify, okay.
Okay. Yeah. Can the applicant answer the questions that have been laid before them by the public?
Hi, Craig Cherry, Epcun Communities, five-hundred Stonehenge Parkway, Dublin, Ohio. Thank you for having us and thanks for everybody's comments. You know, some of the questions that I think have been unanswered, you know, just starting on, I guess, phase three timing and the installation of Rock Drive. Phase three is the last of the three phases that we have planned for our community. And it's going to be roughly twenty-four to thirty-six months after we start. It's all based on market demand and how we get through the first two phases initially. First two phases will be located off of English Drive to both the north and the south. Yeah, English Drive timing to the west of our phase three, that'll be done by the master developer. You know, they are very much interested in completing that as quick as they can, although that, again, is going to be part of the market demand. And, you know, I think, you know, you know, with all the activity that's going on, I would think that the pace of completion of, you know, Evans Farm is, you know, going to be accelerated over what's been there in the past. That's just my own personal opinion. You know, with the timing of phase three, the installation of Rock Drive and the safety concerns raised by the Bryn Mawr residents, you know, as Kelly had mentioned, you know, we have coordinated with Evans Farm, the county, the township, and have arranged that that light will be brought online at about the same time. Now, that's, that's what's going to provide the safety. That's going to cause, you know, breaks in traffic on Old State Road. And it's going to provide an egress point for, you know, residents from not only, you know, the courtyards that we're going to be building, but, you know, any properties to the north that'll be looking to egress out, you know, from Evans Farm. You know, there's been concerns and talk about the location of English Drive. That, you know, the original plan was never vetted through the county or had any approval on that location. It is a county requirement that that be a no-access, you know, no driveway on that road because of the configuration of the community. And in order to make a safe community, you know, they wanted to limit the access on it. That's, you know, my interpretation of the county's, you know, requirements. And, you know, my engineer can speak to that. But essentially, that's it. We have asked the county, you know, on that, on that point as well as whether or not Rock Drive has to be connected. And it is a, you know, it's a township and a county requirement that Rock Drive be connected. And, you know, I think when you look at the overall plan and the installation and the addition of the traffic light, the other improvements that are going to happen due to this development, you know, turn lanes on Old State Road, traffic's going to greatly, you know, improve. And it's going to be a point of ingress that people are going to seek because of the conveniences that are being built into the plant, such as, you know, the left turn lanes for both the north and the south and the traffic light. You know, again, with, you know, I think there's questions on Avonlea and some of the, you know, the other amenities or the pond that was shown on the original sketch plan. You know, that goes back to a time prior to, you know, the environmental studies being done. being done. You know, our plan today is a plan that's buildable and takes into account and respects the natural environmental concerns that are on the property today. We have added some buffering between Avonlea and our community, just as we did to, between our community and the Bryn Mawr neighbors. Price valuation, I mean, when you're looking at what we're doing at $650,000 for a two-bedroom ranch, you look at a price per square foot, we're raising the price without, you know, the prices in the area and not lowering them, and I think that you can see that across Orange Township and across Columbus, that typically, you know, Epcun does not come in and lower the price, you know, the valuations of homes. We typically, you know, you know, we raise it. Our buyer is typically moving from, you know, a home similar to what's in Bryn Mawr into one of ours, and price of value, you know, not really coming in for the savings, we're coming in for the lifestyle. And I think, well, and with that, you know, you know, we're projecting a $1.4 million annual surplus to the school system because of our community, right? Because we're coming in, you know, with our product, and Kelly did a great job describing it, but also, one of the reasons that our product lends itself to the active adult buyer is because of the rear yards, right? We have passive rear yards, we have smaller courtyards in between our homes, it doesn't, you know, you can't, you're not going to have a catch with your kids, your kids aren't playing football in the backyard, you know, all the things that, you know, everyone does in the Bryn Mawr homes, our homes are just not designed for that. So that's why we have the advantage of presenting, you know, 537 homes in Orange Township that, you know, is showing clearly that our demographic is accurate. And with that, I think I've answered all the questions I took notes on. I'm open to any others?
I have one.
Okay.
Oh, I think it might be slide seven, it might be the clearer one, the lane, so where the, I want you to, can you use your beam so he can see where this is going and what is, but I have two, except for people say that the road is going to come so close to their lot lines, I just want to see exactly where it's coming. I see South Old State to the right, correct?
So, yeah, if you look here, if you're looking for where English Drive is approaching Bryn Mawr's development?
Uh huh.
There's another slide that shows that better if you could, if you could look at the distance.
Exhibit EK. Is that the one that's better?
No. It has exhibit H.
That's this one right here.
This tie-in right here.
Tell me, Kelly, perhaps you can give me the distances that we have where English Drive was compared to where it is now. It has, it has kind of a little bit further down, closer to the proper, to the proper grounds, but you can tell the original was generally the same area, you know, it's, you know.
Yeah. Yeah. Kelly, Kelly Fankhauser, 500 Stonehenge Parkway, 43017. The original plan shows about 160 feet from the back of the property line to public, to English Drive, to the right of way. Thank you, Tyler. And our homes are 85 feet.
To the road.
To the road. So, yes. Those are the, that's the difference in the distance, so, yeah, essentially it's...
And so you're gonna, I've heard it's going to cut off the community, it's going to cut through the community or cut it off, do you like?
That's, that's subject to interpretation. I mean, English Drive is going to be a east-west corridor through the community, no matter what the plan is developed there, whether it's at 85 feet from the back of Bryn Mawr's property line or, you know, 100 feet. It's going to be a east-west corridor that's going to have no access, no driveways on it, will have sidewalk. Just to the east or the west of our Phase Three is actually a walking path that's going to go around the pond, connect all the way into Evans Farm on the other side to get down to the shops and, and in the center of Evans Farm. So to cut it off, you know, I mean, it's going to be a road, but there are sidewalks on it and people can use it as, as they choose, so.
Hey, Robin, can you confirm what is a requirement for our newer code or, with respect to newer code or the existing code? What is the minimum distance between a property line and a major, or a 35 per hour speed road is? What is the setback required?
It depends on the zoning district, so unfortunately I don't have a concrete answer for you. Front setbacks typically tend to be 30, 35 feet, but it can vary.
And it depends, I think, also upon the category of the road, and I don't know if this is going to be a major thoroughfare that the county has decided it's going to be.
Yeah, the county is the major thoroughfare. Real quick, phases, you said there's three phases, is this Phase One, Two, and Three, or this is Phase One and Two, and then you're going to go across the street?
That's the entire development, and that is Phases One, Two, and Three. So Phase One will be the intersection of the Old State, the development, the homes to the, to the south of it, as well as basically the homes to the right, and you can essentially see a phase line running north and south. So the, yeah, the west side of the lower section is Phase Two. So when you come in off of English, make a right. If you make a right on our first road, that's Phase One, you make a left, that's Phase Two. So we'll build that entire section, the clubhouse, the amenities, the walking path prior to going to Phase Three, which will be the north-south road and the top east-west road, as well as the internal lots to the northwest.
Our Phase Two?
That's Phase Three is the northwest section. Above the pond is, is Phase Three.
Okay. Got it.
Okay, got it.
You know, from just east of Rock Drive, or just, yeah, just east of Rock Drive, and then up is Phase Three.
And, and you all have, how many communities already in Lewis Center? Did you, did I hear that?
Six. Six. Yeah, so they were listed there with 537 homes.
Okay. So you have six of those already existing in Lewis Center, and you're bringing another one based on what you believe is the demand. Okay. I, I don't have any other questions.
All right. Sorry, do you have any other questions? Okay. Dennis, do you have any other questions?
Nope.
All right. And unfortunately, Ms. Foster.
Do you have any questions?
I have more, I want to say comments and concerns, and I'll just sort of try to organize I understand the census material, and I agree. We've had discussions on the commission with Owen-Tagey Schools before, and generally with apartments and with these, I call them patio home communities, which generally do not produce a lot of drain or students for the school system. And that's through doing this for, I don't know how many years. The traffic, I understand the concerns, and I've questioned also before, but, you know, Institute of Transportation engineers, and if the county agrees that this is, you know, senior housing as opposed to single conventional housing, and that's how it should be considered in a traffic study, that's the county engineer, I'm not going to dispute that. And I think, judging by the Epcun communities we have, they don't produce a lot of the traffic that your standard single-family community produces. And generally, you know, as far as the English Drive and Rock Road connections, that is being dictated by the county, and it's the county that required, if my understanding is correct, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you can no longer have driveways on English Road. That's why all those houses will no longer fit between the development and Bryn Mawr to the south to try to get your road alignment to work for the connection that the county wants with Sunglow. So that I understand. But the concern I have is that Evans Farm was originally designed to, on the ideals of new urbanism and walkable and a connected community and things like that, and mostly Epcun communities are sort of like their own little enclave or their own little pocket. And it seems like your facilities, I know you said are, like, your tennis, tennis courts or pickleball, I think they are now, and your pool, those will just be for the Epcun community. Will you have, I know it's one time you talked about walking trails and sidewalks, will they be just for Epcun? Will they be for the whole community? Because the idea of Evans Farm was to sort of have or create a community. We don't want, or I don't want, I'll rephrase that, a separate community within Evans Farm. I want it, you know, sort of a holistic approach. And then the other thing, and I don't know how to resolve this, but at one time, and maybe you can address this, there was an agreement with Evans Farm, now granted that was 10 years ago, that the properties next to Bryn Mawr, next to the Meadows of Lewis Center, things of that nature, would be the larger lots because they would match those properties. And I don't know when exactly that changed. And so if you all have any recollection, or if Robin has any recollection, or Dennis, if you have any recollection, because you were around back then, to try to explain that to me.
Well, what we knew when, when Evans Farm was approved was that it was large, it was going to take lots of years to develop, and lots of things were going to change.
Exactly.
And so we knew there were lots of things that were going to have to be adjusted because of changes we knew were out there.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I, I'm not too upset that, okay, yeah, I remember Evans Farm originally, those were single-family homes, and for those, we heard all that initially, things have changed, as all of you are aware of. Economy, the economics of things changed. There was going to be lots of other businesses and business buildings, office buildings in Evans Farms. That went away, because we all know that changed.
That changed during COVID.
Exactly. This, to me, is just another, if this still meets the comprehensive plan of Orange Township, this is, to me, is just one of those changes that has been necessary through economics.
Yep, but, you know, I think the last time we met, or first time we met about this, there was a, I think a resident or somebody brought up something about an email. Did we ever get that?
Yeah.
Yeah, did we ever get that reconciled or whatever it was that was about that email?
Thomas Polikowski, 5311 Sandy Drive, Lewis Center. So I was the resident that provided the email because I was on the Homeowners Association Board, and again, this is all part of the, of the plan, right? As the, as the initial developer, it was about a community, it was about being a neighbor. I, I provided that email for consideration by the, by the board because the conversation was exactly that. We want to match your community, we want to be a good neighbor, we want to have a contiguous neighborhood continuing from one to the other with, with lot sizes that match. Okay? So I, I gave that to you. I can provide it in any other format that you would like, but again, that's the conversation. And as I sit here today, I, I get things have changed, but what, what really gets under my skin right now, as I sit here and listen to the conversation, what we're basically saying is that the original proposal couldn't be built. That's what is being, that's what's being built up. We have problems with the road. Well, guess what? Move the road and put the original houses there with an, with another drive, right? The conditions, the conditions are built for this Epcun community, it's not built per the original plan, which, again, zoned for single-family homes. So, and the discussion about being a good neighbor and about continuing neighborhoods was all part of that initial conversation, so.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate you.
The one thing I know that has changed since that initial one was, we did not know, or the county did not dictate English Road at that time, back then, because that was so...
It's in the original plan.
It's in the original plan, but it's not a thoroughfare. That, that wasn't, that wasn't allowed to have houses on both sides. That has been, that has been dictated by the county.
So I took forth some action, I talked to my real estate attorney, and he actually talked to the county, and I actually wish I would have had him here now. I kind of regret it. He asked to come, I was like, no, it should be fine. The plan, the road is the road. The county engineer looked at their plan and said, based off of your plan, the road is adequate. It's an inaccurate statement to say, you can't have driveways off of that. If you go back to the original plan, you can have driveways off of that. Under the Epcun plan, the county engineer said, yes. The developer starts from the edge of where you access it to the road. The road is dictated by the developer, not by the county engineer, because it becomes a county road initially and after it's built, after the developer has put it in there. The plan that you submitted, the county engineer said, yes, that's adequate. If you submit the original plan with the single-family homes, that would also have been adequate and approved. So it's a fallacy that you keep saying that because that's not accurate.
We're not speaking here tonight for the county engineer. We don't speak for the county engineer. This body should not make a decision on someone else speaking for the county engineer. The fact is, when the light was designed to go at the corner of English and Old State, the nature of that road, it was changed. That's what changed it, and that's, that's going to change it no matter what's built. That light is designed for safety, it's going to attract traffic, that, those are facts. And to think that people are going to go some other way to avoid that light, that light is there to, to, to manage traffic. Thank you.
All right.
For the safety of our community and our families, we're having a 35-mile travel road, turn onto a neighborhood with no sidewalk.
Ma'am, ma'am, you had opportunity, if you want to come up and say something else, please identify yourself where you live and that sort of thing, otherwise we need to move on.
So...
Okay.
No more questions? Dennis?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nope.
Nothing? Okay. Does the applicant have any? Okay. All right. So if we're done with the discussion period, then the next thing is to move to a vote, so I need to entertain a motion from the commission. And it looks like we have, Robin, correct me if I'm wrong, he has already prepared us with possible motions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So to remind everyone and to remind the commission, to remind the audience members, so this is a recommending body, this is a recommending vote, so this will be, you have three options, so you have the motions before you, you can recommend approval, you can recommend approval with modifications, you would need to spell out what those modifications would be specifically, or you can recommend denial. Those are your three options. Once the zoning commission has issued its recommendation, the matter will proceed to the Board of Township Trustees. They will schedule a hearing at a future date. It'll be a similar format to this, and then they will vote ultimately to approve or deny the amendment request.
And I'd like to remind members that this meeting is recorded, the minutes will be shared with the trustees, so they will have a record of what was discussed at the previous meetings, and the public is also able to reach out to the trustees as well with their concerns, pro or con. Do you want to add anything else?
I have nothing further.
Okay. So if there is a motion before the commission?
Sure. Motion by Karthik Adanla to recommend to the Board of Township Trustees, the Board, the approval of zoning application ZON-24-08 of Epcun Communities, the pages of which are each stamped received with Orange Township zoning on 12/20/2024, requesting the amendment of the currently effective development plan for property owned by Babelis Zenius Development LLC, application ZON-22-04, upon finding that it is in the interest of the public convenience, comfort, prosperity, or general welfare, or sufficiently in accordance with the comprehensive plan.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I second.
Motion for approval made by Mr. Avada Nula, seconded by Mr. McNulty. Those voting, Ms. Trebelis?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
No.
Mr. Avada Nula?
Yes.
Mr. McNulty?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Recommendation is for approval.
Okay. And as a reminder, this is a recommendation. You can reach out to your trustees with your concerns. The trustees will have this recommendation, and at the next meeting, Robin, do you know when the next meeting is? They will schedule a hearing for this. So is there any other business before the commission?
Yes. So we do need to discuss our next meeting date. So we do have a meeting next week for another rezoning application, so it's the 14th. We do want to continue our discussion of our draft zoning code with you all, and then we are also going to bring in our legal counsel to do a training and then Q and A with the commission as well. So the potential dates for those would be either the 21st of January or the 28th of January, depending on your schedules.
Yeah, I know I will not be here on the 21st of January, but the 28th would be a preferable time.
Okay. So 28th is good?
Yes.
Yeah, the 28th would be better for me as well.
Okay. Great.
Okay. So we also have a meeting on the 14th, is my understanding?
Correct. So I've sent out that digital version to you all. There are hard copies on that table, so please pick up one on your way out. I'm working on my SAF report, I'll get that out to you later this week.
Okay. Thank you. And then for the 28th is when we'll have our meeting to go over the draft changes to our zoning resolution. Any other business before the commission?
I have nothing.
All right. Well, then I hereby conclude zoning commission meeting of January 7.